Roll call, please.
I'm here, Mike Meyer. Are you virtual?
That's virtual.
Uh, Spike is not going to be virtual.
Not virtual, no. Yeah. Nick Schumacher?
Yep.
Brooke Taylor?
Here.
Steve Stupack here.
Lynn Albright here.
President Olson here.
All please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, without borders, free, democratic, and just as strong.
And thank you very much for being here. This meeting is a meeting of the Board of Education held in public for the purpose of conducting the school district's business and is not considered to be a public community meeting. There is tying for comments by members of the public during the meeting as indicated on the agenda. Members of the public wishing to address the board on any of the topics included on tonight's agenda may do so by completing a public comment signup sheet and handing it to our deputy clerk Anne. Any comments involving personally identifiable information about students, staff, or administration is not allowed. Comments should be respectful, focused on the items being considered by the board, and will be restricted to three minutes and like. The first action today is the disposition of minutes from April 10, 2023, and special session April 17, 2023.
Both approve.
Second, for the most, remember, second to approve the minutes from April 10, 2023, and April 17, 2023. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Informational items. First off tonight is our Spartan showcase. I'm glad here for this young man. We had the pleasure of working with for many years. Nominate tonight is Brian Denninger. Brian is dedicated to his students. He works every year to learn all the kids' names and keeps a positive attitude throughout his day. He shines when he is working with students that have struggles and hardships. He is trusted by both staff and students. Another comment about Brian. Brian is a vital member of our Superior High School staff. He works hard to build connections with students and makes them feel safe and supported in school. Brian responds with calmness even in the most difficult situations. We are lucky to have him at Superior High School. Brian's role has been varied throughout his career and stuff, but my favorable memories of you is working with you in the Special Education Department and how you have the knack of keeping that department somewhat glued together, Brian, because you always had this sense of calm about you and things that you spoke about were very true and always had the best interest of students at heart. So I'm very, very pleased to honor you with this Spartan showcase for May 2023.
All right, thanks, guys.
Appreciate it. You certainly can stay for the whole meeting if you'd like. Probably want to take the white away, can't it?
Yeah.
Hey, Brian. Brian, this is Amy. Brian, this is Amy. Can you hear me?
Next informational item is, we had a number of reports at our last meeting at the committee, the whole meeting on April 10. Representative Aaron Johnson shared updates from the high school, and Aaron here is tonight, and you're serving your last meeting with us.
Yep.
Just want to thank you on behalf of the board again for all the work that you did, especially at the high school, and we look forward to meeting the person who will be taking your
Announcement about
An announcement. All right, you're up.
Thank you. So two weeks ago, we had our presidential election vote, and we announced Autumn Cooper as our president, and Ryus Marzia will be our vice president as well. And moving forward this spring, we are working on planning our Spring Fling Fair rather than a typical assembly on May 18th, and we're hoping to have this outside, but we're working on a backup plan for inside just in case as well. We'll be having many different games as well as a dunk tank that I will be in. We've got a full week dress up days with Monday starting up Soccer Mom vs. Barbecue Dad, Tuesdays Country vs. Country Club, which we're bringing back from last year. Wednesday, we're doing Dressing Day, which is a new one for the high school. Freshmen are gonna be Blue Cheese, sophomores with Thousand Island, juniors are Ranch, and then seniors are Caesar. And then Thursday, we've got our Spring Fling shirts to go along with our fair that we're having. We're trying to do it on a Thursday rather than the Friday, and then Friday, we've got Anything But a Backpack Day. And then
It's pretty funny.
The Spring Day.
Yeah. Are there restrictions? Yes.
Yes, yeah. We bring the same restrictions as last year. And then Dave, we've still been going strong with AB testing, having calculus, AB, and EC happening this morning.
And a very important date is coming up in a few school days. In a second.
Yep.
You're ready?
And we'll have graduation on in a second. There is 18 days left for seniors.
School days.
School days.
All right.
President Olson, can you hear me?
I can.
Oh, now it feels really loud. Okay. I just wanted to say thank you to Aaron. He's served our board really well over the last year. I'm gonna miss working with you, but I'm looking forward to being there when you get your diploma in June. But thanks for all you've done this last year on the school board. We really appreciate it.
Thank you for the opportunity as well.
Nice job. Good job, and welcome. I don't, we look forward to working with you next year. We also have an informational item on UWS Community Partner Award recognition, which is awarded to our Superior School District. Principal Flaherty shared updates on Lake Superior Elementary, and Principal Fezzi shared updates on Superior High School. We do have one action item. Uh, two, in fact, to consider. Updated action item, consideration of the overnight field trip request for the SHS Spartan Spin Advisors and teachers to attend the Journalism Education Association National Conference.
Both approve.
Second.
Motion in a second to approve this overnight field trip. Is there any discussion? I know as I went through it, I thought it was very well filled out and very informational, and I think it's a great opportunities for our kids to head out to Boston and see so much of the East Coast and so many things that go on out there and maybe learn a new dialect. Act with a little different dialect, but anything to add to that, Krista, or Elise?
So we're working on some funding opportunities, so hopefully financial restrictions won't be any barrier to students, but some of those scholarships on behalf of the conference don't come out till this summer, so we'll have updates then.
Any further discussion by the board members? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. The next action item is an updated action item, consideration of board meeting calendar for 2023-24. I can inform the board, excuse me, in a second.
I make a motion?
Second.
Motion in a second to approve.
I should have waited. I should have waited. I should have waited. You're supposed to give me those. Don't forget to kick you in the leg.
All right, so option one, board meeting calendar for Monday meetings. That's where I'd like to make my motion.
Second.
And there's a second. Motion in a second for option one to continue board meeting calendars on Monday evenings. Is there any discussion?
Yes, I think it would be better that we stay with the Monday night meetings because the whole district, we all know how to work together and to make some hardships if we change it to Thursday night for some of our administrators and that to be at the meetings.
And we were concerned about one of our board members due to a job change that he had that he would not be able to make Monday, Monday, Tuesday, and Wednesday. In fact, his job has changed even a little bit more now and unfortunately can't be here again tonight because of that commitment. But he, after conversing with him yesterday, was willing to make things work by hopefully being virtual. Again, he couldn't tonight due to a situation he's in. And he also, we talked about, I talked about changing perhaps the time of our meetings with superintendent Starzacki and stuff, but he was very good about keeping the meetings now on Monday evenings. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor by, signify by accepting option one, Monday meetings. Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Our next discussion item is, I'm very happy to introduce to you State Senator Romaine Quinn. He's taken time out of his day to meet with the board this evening to give us some updates, Romaine, on some things that are going on downstate and hopefully some good news eventually.
Always good. Always. Yeah, no, I appreciate that community team, Brooke, others that reached out to me. Appreciate the invitation and being here for any of that I haven't met. It's nice to meet you. My name is Romaine. I'm a new state senator for the 25th from the Rice Lake area. I was previously in the legislature for six years, each time sat on the Education Committee, I'm vice chair of the Senate Committee on Education, so pretty familiar with some of the challenges you guys go through. So I want to thank all the board members for being willing to run. It's not always fun to put your name on the ballot and stick your neck out in front of your community when a lot of people in today's world like to throw arrows without knowing what's going on. And before, I don't want to forget, these two students were on my tour when I stopped last time, and so you'll be in good hands even with the change. They were both pretty articulate, and I was impressed when we got to meet, so good to see you again. So I just wanted to give you a brief update. Happy to engage in any questions you might have. I, part of this stemmed from, there might have been confusion about what is the state doing or not doing, or what are comments that I may have made regarding school funding, and so the best way to clear the air is for me to actually be here. So just a little context of where we are in the budget process. So right now, the governor introduces his proposal, the Joint Finance Committee, which is made up of Democrats and Republicans of both houses, then take that proposal and say, we can work off this and make changes, or we can scrap it, start from base, meaning not totally new, but where we're at today, and then build from there. So the legislature has once again chosen to build from base, where we're at today, and go up from there. So we look at our pots of monies and say, how do we build that budget up from where we are today? So we know the state has a surplus. It's about $2.8 billion of ongoing money, meaning money we can build into programs like schools that we know is there year in and year out, general increase in tax collections that we can spend ongoing. The other portion of that is now continuing to grow, with about $7 billion in one-time funding, so cash, so things we would not invest in ongoing expenditure that we don't know we can continue. So infrastructure, roads, bridges, other items that, maybe even endowment funds, things where we can set monies aside that could grow or pay for things, maybe ongoing, but we know the state will not collect them next year. And so it's important that when we build budgets just like you do, you can't continue to pay for things out of your fund balance, things that are ongoing, but the money's not going to be there. So we have about $500, $500 million in cost of continuing MA, so we're really looking at more of like $2.2 billion on what we want to spend ongoing. And in that 2.2 is where the state will decide where the number falls for K-12 education on the backdrop of corrections, of the UW system, of everything else that we fund in the state, which we all know are important. So my goal has always been, as a northern Wisconsin legislator, is that I'm never going to convince my colleagues to understand that we're different. So I try to sell school funding in a way that I try to sell them as, that solves problems. So there's a lot of different districts across the state. We have 435, I think, almost the same amount of members we have of Congress, and they're all different. Your district is different, your needs are different, some similarities, but than many other parts of the state. And so we know that you are, for instance, a low-spending district. You're large geographic-wise, you have lots of costs for transportation, and I know you're dealing with the challenge of having a number of community schools versus one location, and there's, and there's can be costs associated with that. And so the problem is, is trying to get people from other parts of the state with a lot more money than us, and already spend more money than us, to say that Superior needs more money, right? Because there's other people that have a higher revenue limit, and I know everyone on the board understands this, but the public knows that there's a revenue limit that each school is locked into back in whenever. Steve, I'm sure you were teaching back in the day at that time, and for right or wrong, that's where the bar was set. And so Superior, Maple, Spooner, I'm trying to think of the other ones in my district, Drummond, have been perpetually locked into this revenue limit that's been lower than your neighbors or other parts of the state. And that number is paid for by a combination of state dollars and property tax dollars, which is based on your property's valuation. So if you forget all that, focus on the $10,000 number is where you're at. I think you're just above 10, or you're at 10.
At 10.
You're right at 10. So you've been low for a long time. I was a part of the original conversations back in 16 when you passed a resolution then saying, hey, we gotta get off 9,400 and catch up. So I was part of that conversation that got everyone to 10, and now here we are, fast forward, there's COVID, S or dollars are gone, and a lot of you are locked into a floor that is just not sustainable, especially when you're competing with Duluth or other neighbors not that far away that have more of that ability. So that's where we're at today. So when I go to the legislature, and I go to Joint Finance, I'm assigned a member, is I try to advocate for things that I know that can try to solve problems and sell. So I was hoping that we could get everyone to 10,500 this year. So $500 a student, based on, you have 4,500 kiddos, I can't remember roughly how many, if you're at 4,000, 4,500, you know, that's about 2.25 million more dollars there. For every penny, for every percent we raise, special education funding reimbursement, I think it's about $40 million, you know, I was hoping, how can we get from 30 to 36%? And if you break that out for Superior, that's roughly another $400,000. And so I've approached my meetings that, you know, these are the minimums that I think we need to get schools at least to. So in my mind, a minimum, if I had my way, Superior would see probably just shy of $3 million in additional funding from the state. Obviously, there's a lot of other things that could happen between now and then. Fortunately, I had a conversation with, so our, our Joint Finance Committee, we have a team, and our team on the Republican side, our architect, there are these assigned issues for education. I had a meeting with him last week, and his goal is to spend about a billion dollars on schools and to get everyone to 11. And so I think that would really be a game changer for the Superiors, the Camerons, the Spooners of the world that have been locked into this low revenue ceiling. So he's usually my, my stickler in our caucus. He's usually the one that comes from a wealthy suburb where his schools are just fine, so he doesn't see the need. But I think he understands, and everyone understands, the inflationary pressures we've all seen in our businesses, in our own households, and of course, at our school district level. So that's the last conversation I've heard from him. If we got to 11, you know, you're looking at more like four and a half million dollars, and not including the special ed, so maybe even closer to five. And so trying to give that to you as, as I get it, you know, Steve, I'm happy to follow up conversations as I hear more. I know it's really hard to set your budget when your timelines don't match our timelines, you know, so how are you hiring for staff and planning for those expenses when the state budget's not set? Unfortunately, I don't think we're ever going to be able to mirror, because we just operate in a different vacuum. So the budget should be done by, well, July 1st, but I would prefer it done in June. But we should know by early June, by that time, Joint Finance hopefully should have already gone through the education budget. It may not be done with corrections, it may not be done with Medicaid, things like that, but at that point, it should be done with K-12. And once Joint Finance takes that position, that's what's in the budget. Whether the budget actually gets passed July 1, whenever they take up that department, that's when it's set. And so at least you'll know, at a minimum, this is what the legislature is going to spend on K-12. Now, at that point, the budget goes to the governor. He can line item things out. He could throw the whole thing in the trash, or he can sign it as is. And so I don't see him ever vetoing money down for schools. I don't think that's gonna happen. So I think it's pretty safe to say, come June, once the legislature has taken that vote, you'll know exactly, at a minimum, what you'll be getting from the state. So hopefully that's a little bit helpful as you're trying to have these conversations. I know, I think you're having tough conversations about your community schools and what to keep open, and like every district in northern Wisconsin, you have declining enrollment, and how do you maintain facilities when you have less kiddos? And, you know, the issue snowballed. I don't want to tell you all of that. You're on the board, so you see all that. But just know that I have always been an advocate for public education. I've always been an advocate for rural schools, and I sit on these committees not because they're the most fun, but because I know they're gonna have the greatest impact for our communities. And if I can have an impact at the committee level before it ever gets to Joint Finance, et cetera, that's why I want to be in the room at those times. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions you may have, or entertain any kind of dialogue surrounding the budget that, that might be important to you.
I'll ask the first one then.
Sure.
In the special education area, funding. I mean, what, what responsibility do you see that the federal government has in this, as well as to help all states? Because they have been just as flat with funding as states can and perhaps funding from them. Does that give any hope to us that, you know, if you have conversations with Mr. Tiffany, you know, it
Sure.
What does that really look like? Or is the Fed just sitting out there, oh, well?
And the problem is, you know, is a lot of these regulations, their mandates surrounding special ed come from the feds, right? And I'm not saying the regs are right or wrong. They should say you should provide every child a quality education regardless of their ability or what their challenges are. But as you know, federal reimbursement's about 5.5%. The state's doing a poor job at 30, 33%. The feds are coming about 5.5%. So we could see the biggest gain if the feds were to step up and do their job? The federal government, I wish they budgeted like Wisconsin. They don't budget. They come down to a crisis, they pass an omnibus bill, they don't read it, and it buys them some time until they can fight about it again. We already see this now with the death ceiling crisis, et cetera. So they don't even pass budgets. They just pass continuing resolutions, and god only knows what's gonna be in them every time. So I would just assume, since they're also broke, that that number's probably never gonna go up, right or wrong. I just, I don't hold out for it.
So then to follow up, and that's, so our state budget, then 36%, you're, you know, hoping to have happen and stuff, so that's 36 for two years? Or do you see that in that biennium that it'd be 36 one year and maybe something more in second?
Depends on how we, we build it. So if, if the goal is to, you know, spend a billion, there is more wiggle room. I was being conservative, hoping I could get my caucus to 500 million. So I built my ass around a $500 million plan. They're willing to go to a billion. And so I think there's a little more wiggle room where we can play with the edges, you know, do we up high-cost transportation a little more? Do we up, up some of those categoricals or special ed a little more? I think there could be room for that. Or do we up the per pupil? And I forgot about that, too. So part of the conversation beyond getting you to the 11 is to do a per pupil upper. And I've heard across the board, and I've heard at a minimum, I was shooting for 100 and 100. If you spend $100 per pupil more each year over the biennium, it costs $240 million. This breaks out, because you build 100 in the first year, you do another 100, but you still build that 100 in. So it's $300 really over two years. So they even threw out 250 and 250. And so you theoretically could have potentially another $500 per student on top of that almost $5 million. So another 500 is, again, 2.25 if you've got 4,500 kids. And so I don't know, I think I read the paper, you're looking at like an $8 million? Or, oh, well, hey, we're in pretty darn good shape then. I think we're getting there. So again, these are all up in the air, but in that billion, those things could change. Is it 200 and 200? And then special ed goes from 36 to 40. It'll just all be in that threshold, however those dollars kind of shake out. But you guys are always on the low end, and so there's gonna be a lot of districts, and I have them, and I'm frank with my superintendents, that already spend 11-2, 11-3. And I go to a CISA meeting, and I just tell them that, hey, you're not gonna get the same as a Superior or a Maple or a Cameron. If you're Rice Lake, you're Barron, and you're whoever else nearby that already spends more. And so you just, you're not all gonna get the same. So our goal is to try and catch people up, even the playing field. And so, yeah, when you want to compare report cards, that's fine, but give us the same opportunity to compete as everybody else in the state, and have that same amount of resources for kids, whether you invest that in staff, and so on.
Steve, this is Amy. Can I ask a question?
Sure.
Hi, sorry I'm not there, Senator Quinn. This is Amy Starzacki.
Hi.
I am on, I'm on a medical leave, but I'm back on Wednesday. Um, I just have a real, I don't know if it's a quick question, but you've heard me talk multiple times about probably the number one issue facing our, our district is the mental health needs of our students. And I see that the Joint Finance Committee has cut the, the mental health component of Governor Evers' budget. Do you anticipate they'll counter offer something else, or do you see a different solution, or no solution to that need that we're seeing in our schools?
Yeah, so that plays back into Joint Finance going back to base. And so the legislature, they take the budget, they go back to base, and then everyone says, you know, oh my goodness, look at all the stuff they cut. But that was always part of the plan to go back to base. So it doesn't mean there's gonna be no mental health funding. They got rid of all the policy in the budget. I think there's 545 non-budget related items the legislature removed, and including that was a lot of different spending. So now they'll build that back in some shape or form. So I don't know what will come back in schools. You know, we've talked about a categorical aid per pupil to schools, but at the end of the day, if, if we give you more monies that are spendable through special ed, through per pupil funding in general and not tied to mental health, of course, that could be used under your discretion for mental health. My only fear is designating a per pupil category for mental health, a very small amount, and the legislature can wash their hands of it and say, look, we spent money on mental health, you know, even though it was 25 bucks a kid, right? Well, 25 bucks times 4,500 kids, it doesn't buy you a whole lot. But if I get you $1,000 more per pupil out of the gate, you're in a better position to take those monies, potentially invest in a mental health. So it's, it's, it's kind of tricky, but the goal is just to try to get you spendable dollars that you can work with the board and invest in whatever need you see is best fit.
Sure. I think it's just important, just to continue to reiterate, the mental health and the, our student mental health needs, I think, have a direct impact on our overall school safety and, you know, our bullying initiatives and all that work that we do. And so we just need to continue to advocate for addressing those needs, I think.
Yeah, and part of the problem, and you know, this is, we just, we don't even have the practitioners to provide it, you know, so even if you had the funding, sometimes you probably can't even find the staff. So a lot of it, too, is we're trying to incentivize ways, how do we build a pipeline through our educational institutions? Well, just at UWS today, they have a really robust counselor program. We're talking about ways, how do we get those kids out sooner, in the field sooner, and tied to places here in Superior, so they don't get their diploma and go across the river or other places, and then incentivizing those who already do the work. So one of our budget motions will be to take an existing, it's, it's through the Office of Rural Health to, for Dennis, to recruit them to rural areas, and forgive their student loans if they worked for so many years, and we want to apply that to mental health practitioners as well, trying to get them to say, hey, if you come up and work for North Lakes Clinic, or whoever your FQHC is here in Superior, you know, we'll forgive some of your student loans to offer that access to people in your community and potentially your kiddos. So there's a whole host of issues on trying to create more access for, for student mental health, for sure.
Thank you.
Some other questions?
Yeah, you'd mentioned going to 10, 5, or 11,000 at increase. Is that all gonna be earmarked for public schools, or could that potentially, some of that go to the privates or vouchers also?
Yeah, so any money that's dealing with like the revenue limit, if it goes to 10, 5, or 11, that's your spendable dollars. So that's the amount you get as a school to spend per kiddo. So, and of course, that shakes out whatever the property tax portion of your, of your aid would be.
And then you had mentioned, like, the higher spending districts, I'll say, like a Solon, or I'll use South Shore, who's getting anywhere from $3,000 to $5,000 more per pupil than we do. Would they see that same increase, or potentially not see the increase, so that we kind of try to balance things out a little bit?
So, and that's part of the reason why the legislature discarded, especially the education portion of the governor, and not to get into any debates, but they gave everyone 1,500 bucks a kid, and it really would continue to exacerbate the inequities, I think, that we see. Now, in Solon's defense, in South Shore's defense, you know, they don't have the economies of scale you guys do. You know, even though they're spending $3,000, $5,000 more a student, you know, their superintendent's probably also their, their business manager, or their business manager is also their curriculum director. I mean, they don't, they don't have a lot of facts. At some point, once we catch you guys up, the state also has to look and say, for districts that are very rural, like a Drummond or a South Shore, and there's really nowhere else to go with these kids, we may have to have a special aid to keep the doors open as it continues to decline in enrollment, because we have to exist. Kids have to, they have a constitutional right to a public education, and you start to weigh some of those judicial questions when they're on the bus for an hour and a half one way. So I think there's gonna be other conversations in the future. How can we support those real remote, small schools? But this budget, it's, it's not gonna be done this budget. Our focus is a lot of the low spenders like Superior.
What is, what is a major opposition to, for people, right, raise that you're seeing? So when we go and talk, like, Amy went and spoke to the Joint Finance Committee, Brooke and Steve, and Mr. Tiffany. So when we go and talk, like Amy went and spoke to the Joint Finance Committee, Brooke and Steve, that's the taxi, Mr. Tiffany. What's the opposition? So we know what they're looking at, and then maybe we can discuss that a little bit with them, too.
So really, on the raising the the low revenue ceiling, it's not really opposition. It's just the debate of how much should it be? You know, I never dreamed that the senator I talked to was okay going to eleven. So like, I'll take it. I was trying to keep my poker face and not, you know, ah, what, what'd you say? So I was surprised he was willing to go that far. Because again, realistically, you guys could get there on your own, but you'd have to go to referendum. And we know that's tough. And so what the legislature is doing is saying, we will raise it for you. And so don't forget, if you go to eleven, your property taxpayers will still be bearing a portion of that. And so the legislature never wants to do any of that too drastic because you will see that on your local taxes somewhat. I don't know what percent you guys are aided. If you're sixty percent, forty percent, seventy percent, that gets you to where your low revenue limit is. I don't know if you have that number. You are. Okay. So you're getting a pretty good deal. So if you go up a thousand bucks a student, the state's paying for sixty-five percent of that. And then the taxpayers are picking up the other percentage you're getting. And so that, that's kind of how that shakes out. But that's really the only hesitation. It's just nothing too drastic. But I would argue the last budget, because I wasn't here, but the legislature knew you, there's a lot of extra dollars coming in. They didn't want to put more state dollars into schools because you had those, they wanted you to burn them up and then come back. And here we are today. You had to come back for money because all those funds are gone. And they they plowed all the money they did last time into the general formula, which is about five hundred and eighty million dollars, I think they spent on schools, just to be able to get the federal match. And all they did was buy down property taxes. And so when the legislature spent almost six hundred million last time and plowed it into the formula, if we don't raise your spending cap, all it does is pick up, it raises the state's share and it reduces your local property taxes. So I would argue even jumping to eleven, I think that's like another hundred and forty million dollars on the property tax. But we just bottomed down almost six hundred million last budget. So I think there's more than enough room. And I think people support their schools enough to say, hey, you know, we we need to play catch up. And now we're just not making you go to referendum to do that. Because that's not fun either.
Other board members, any questions?
Other questions?
I know, just when I spoke to you, I guess the big thing for me is that I always hear the debate of Republican versus Democrat, and they're the ones who stop it, the ones, you know, all of this stuff with blame game and things. And and I just want to continue to advocate that this is a nonpartisan issue. Most of the schools in our state are facing these same problems. And so we really do need to come together and figure something out because we all need the help. We really do. So hopefully that can happen.
Yeah, and that's where I would say, if you ever hear anything or have questions or not sure what the legislature is doing and and, you know, we have a lot of conversations in our caucus. And there's a lot of Republicans that don't agree with a lot of Republicans. There's a lot of Democrats that don't agree with a lot of Democrats on what schools should, should be, what level funded, how much property tax. So I would just say, reach out if you do have questions or hear something, you know, like I always have an open door, so please don't hesitate to reach out. And we're happy to continue that dialogue.
Thank you so very much. And I'm very glad that you said I'm always an advocate for public education. I think that speaks volumes. Thank you for being here and
All right.
And touch.
Yes, have a great night. Appreciate the time.
Safe travels.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Stay for the rest.
I didn't give my good drive, racing. Warmer today than it was here.
It's always warmer.
The next portion of our meeting tonight are the board committee reports. The first one is the Personnel and Negotiations Committee. The Action Item Administration recommends approval of the updated May two thousand twenty-three new hires, transfers, and separations report.
Move to approve.
Second.
There's a motion in the second to approve the updated twenty twenty-three hires, transfers, and separations report. Any discussion?
Back chime in, Steve, really quick?
Yes, please.
So the reason why you're seeing all the red is because this is what we did in a week in each charge. So it's a really busy time of the year, and I didn't want to wait till the next month to put the new and the people resigning and retiring until June. So I added the changes that have happened since the last board meeting.
Thanks, Molly. Certainly like to thank those people that have worked for our district, and you've been very valuable to us, and we appreciate all your time. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. I would accept the motion to accept the Personnel and Negotiations Committee report.
Motion to accept.
Second.
And a second to accept the Personnel Negotiations Committee report. Any further discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Next committee report was the Teaching and Learning Committee. We had no action items, no discussion items. Informational items at the committee, the whole meeting on May first, the following people gave updates. Kate Tesh, our Director of Continuous Improvement and Assessment. She gave us information on our state assessment update, and she provided us the testing that's going on now, all the testing that the students have done thus far. And she's hoping by sometime in June to give us an update on some of the scores from our student testing. Erica Hutton Parker, our Director of Student Services, spoke to us about Project Search. She gave a recap of twenty twenty, twenty twenty-two, twenty-three, and showed us what the projected interns look like for the twenty-three, twenty-four year. Jen Willoughby, the Director of Early Childhood and Family Education, provided us information on the Peter Garden Transition Night recap. So do I have a motion to accept the Teaching and Learning Committee report?
So move.
Say.
Motion in a second to accept the Teaching and Learning Committee report. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Next committee report was the Budget and Insurance Committee. We have two action items. The first action item, gifts, grants, and bequests. The administration recommends approval to accept gifts, grants, and bequests received in April of twenty twenty-three.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion in a second to approve the gift, grants, and bequests. Any further discussion?
Thank you.
Yes, thank you. Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. The next action item, the CISA twelve Shared Services Contract. Administration recommends approval of the twenty-three, twenty-four Shared Services Contract with CISA twelve in the amount of one hundred seventeen thousand, three hundred and eighty-eight dollars. It provided with this attachment to look over. Cost for twenty twenty-two, twenty-three was one nineteen, two forty-six. So we have a little bit less of a commitment for the school year, this coming school year.
Move to approve.
Say.
Motion in a second to approve the CISA twelve Shared Services Contract for twenty-three, twenty-four. Any further discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. There were no discussion items. Informational items, Shannon is still sharing with us the fund ten revenue and expenditure reports. And I believe you said something that right now we're at the point where eighteen, it would be the cutoff for any further any discussion about this from any board member? All right. So do I have a motion to accept the Budget Insurance Committee report?
Motion to accept.
Second.
Motion in a second to accept the Budget Insurance Committee report. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. The legislation, excuse me, Legislative Committee, action items, non-discussion items, tons. Informational items. Record amounts of library aid to be paid to public schools this year, the Board of Commissioners. Public lands has informed the Department of Public Instruction that a record fifty-two million is available for payment to the school districts as library aid. As a result, aid for school libraries from the Common School Fund in twenty twenty-two, twenty-three school year will be forty-five dollars and thirty-eight per census student. All information comes from the WASB Legislative Update page, and you can click on any of the links. Do I have a motion to accept the Legislative Committee report?
Motion to accept.
Second.
Motion and accept, and a second to accept the Legislative Committee report. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. The Operations Committee, we have two new items, action items. The first updated action item, Administration recommends the approval of the Northern Interstate Construction Bid for parking lot repair and waterproofing. The administration building totaling four hundred fifty-nine thousand, seven hundred and twenty-eight dollars.
Move to approve.
Second.
Have a motion and a second to approve the Northern Interstate Construction Bid. Discussion.
Did everybody? What other sounds? Thank you again, Bob, for also, I asked Shannon, it was after I sent that that could just talk about where the money comes from and that it's not part of our deficit or
So I'll just talk about the fact that this hasn't planned. It was in the long range, so it's planned. So it has been on the docket. It's will also be coming out of Fund Forty-Six, so it will not be coming out of the general fund. It's not part of the streaming deficit dollars. It's on
The Fund Forty-Six, now that fund has special money in it then, or do we part of our budget, you put money in there, so we have. So that's not the fund that at one time helped because you pay for the complex? That
I think you're thinking, there's, there's two separate things there. So Fund Forty-Six was started, you had to start it by you had to start it and then wait five years before you could access the money. It was a plan that DPI implemented so that if you had extra money left over at the end of the year, that you have a place to put it rather than going into fund balance, you could earmark it for capital projects. So I believe you started in twenty sixteen, 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 seventeen. And then the five-year period was up, and then you could start spending it. So you could put money in there for the last five years, six years.
Which is different than the old building fund.
Correct. Yes.
That's what you're saying.
The building fund followed you from when you, the city operated the school, and then they turned it over to the school board, then that money followed. It's different than the Fund Forty-Six that was established in, like I said.
Building fund money as well means for the complex.
Yes. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor accepting the approval of the Northern Interstate Construction Bid for Parking Lot Repair and Waterproofing of the Administration Building. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Second updated action item, Administration recommends the approval of the NIC Bid for Waterproofing Four Corners Elementary School totaling one hundred eighty-four thousand dollars.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion in a second. Further discussion?
Yeah, one question, Bob. How many bidders did we have on these, on these?
Right there.
Oh. Oh, now I see it. Sorry. All right.
Five bidders, only one turned in a price.
Okay. Thank you.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. There are no discussion items, informational items at the committee of the whole meeting on May one building. I mean, I gave a good update. Bobby Matherley provided us with good part of Do I have a motion to accept the Operations Committee report?
Some will. Second.
Motion and a second to accept the Operations Committee report. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Other reports by members of the board?
Well, I was able to attend the Superior Scholarship Foundation meeting a week and a half ago. They gave the statistic for this year's scholarships. They gave a hundred and eighty-eight scholarships given to one hundred and twenty-four students valuing three hundred and thirteen thousand, four hundred and fifty dollars, which is up from about thirty thousand from last year, which is outstanding. So I just wanted to, again, thank everyone involved in this foundation. Thank all of the donors for keeping it up and running for our students. It's a huge thing. So thank you to everybody involved with that. May seventeenth, from seven to eight-thirty, is the Scholarship Recognition Night. I was also able to attend the Culture Night at Northern Lights Elementary School. It was a great turnout. Almost two hundred and fifty people in attendance that night. My kids enjoyed going down the halls with their little passports and getting stamps and stickers, visiting the different booths. So that was very well done and neat for schools. And then I was able to attend a meeting to bridging the gap with Project Reach in Life. Very important conversations happened that night. There was great brainstorming from all those in attendance that night. It's, it's a really positive thing that we have going on there. So and then I'll let Steve, I guess, probably update on the WASB event that he, Shannon and I attended.
Yes, the last Thursday event, Shannon and Brooke and I were in Hayward for a WASB District Administrator Meeting and stuff. And the gist of it really is the importance that the board has the synergy with our director, Amy Starzaki, and how do we how do we collaborate together to be, you know, meld as one, be the best board we can be to help Amy in any way? And then to definitely support her in all of her actions. As, as we know, we are in challenging times and stuff. But what was kind of neat about the whole thing was the number of schools from the CISA that were there, the seventeen. I counted fourteen in attendance, and it was, it was very informational to hear how they handled their meetings. We were provided with a governance protocol about things that we do at our meeting and stuff. And what I'm going to do is get a copy of that and provide it to the board members, and we'll have a little hopefully get together and be able to discuss how we see ourselves as as a board. We were encouraged to evaluate ourselves much more than what we do. We are, we were encouraged that evening to make sure we have an ongoing conversation with our superintendent kind of evaluation. Where are you at this time of the year? How are things going? You know, what happens is we're required by law to do one per year and stuff. But it made more sense from the presenters that we're a little more involved with with Amy and see how things are really going in the district at that moment instead of trying to remember what happened back in July, September, you know, those types of things. So on a very beneficial, it was nice to, I joked with Shannon and Brooke said, I'm not here to hobnob. But my goodness, the number of people that I saw there and met.
It's Steve.
And
He knows everyone, and everyone knows Steve.
Appreciating. But it was very, it was really a neat evening to see the number of people educators that went back and are serving on their boards. And then to listen to the other superintendents that were there as well, to listening to the same challenges and how they're trying to get at, at meeting those challenges in their districts. So
Hey, Steve?
Yes.
I just wanted to thank you guys for going. I'm sorry I couldn't attend with you last week. We'll make sure we go together next time. But I think those are always powerful training sessions where we can kind of reflect on our, how we function together and how we can improve. So I talked to Shannon a little bit about it. It sounded like it was a good event.
It was. It was a very nice evening, and the food is great.
So thanks for going. I appreciate it.
You're welcome. Thanks for having, letting us go.
Um, add one?
Yeah. No, I'll wait.
Oh, all right. I just want to add, what's important, Fiesa? I'm going to highlight that just because one thing that I saw, I thought was, is important to talk about is walking around, seeing other students. This is the first time I've seen it. Maybe you've done it before, but they had Post-Its and other students were, and even just people in general, were writing positive comments on Post-Its and sticking it to people's or around people's artwork. So that was very encouraging to see, very positive thing that the students and actually a lot of adults were doing as well. But just the mix between the orchestra and the artwork. Um, but just the mix between the orchestra and the artwork. Aaron here had his own piece in the in the show there.
The the half of the table of ceramic stuff was also mine.
Those are yours. I I took note to the cutting. There used to be a time people could buy the artwork too. I missed those days. I don't know. I don't do that anymore. Um, I want to highlight that. And also I took in uh some of the senior projects. Um, talked to several students. And again, it's nice and encouraging to see uh students be able to discuss their projects with not just a panel in front of them, but really about staff, teachers, community, people like me that just shows up and starts talking to them. Um, tried to recruit a couple of students uh to be teachers in the future. Um, but a wide array of uh jobs being presented there from machinists, engineers, teachers, I mean, you name it, they're there. Um, so I thought that was a very nice way to do senior projects to get more people involved in that than personally students and talks a little bit more to us. Just want to highlight those two things.
Thank you. Other reports? I have two other things. Um, committee assignments, uh not done with those yet. I'm meeting with Amy on Monday. A number of things, but I'll be discussing our committee assignments with her then and then have them all ready for our June meeting. So you'll be getting information from me, from me indicating which committee you'll be on. Um, finally, I do have an uh announcement to make. Uh, Mr. Meyer is not here tonight. And as I indicated early in the meeting and stuff, that Mike's job is has changed. In fact, the job that he took, responsibilities were expanded. Mike and I have been in contact for a few days now. And uh he wanted to make this work. And just thinking of of all the things that Mike has done for our school district, this unfortunately, this letter is intended to officially announce my resignation from the School Board of Superior. It has been an honor serving in this role on behalf of the community. During my tenure, Superintendent Starzacki and President Albrecht have guided our group through both challenging and celebratory times. I have a tremendous amount of respect for their education and leadership. Thank you to the staff in our district. I am proud to say my children attend school in one of the most amazing districts in the state and benefit from the daily interaction they have with the amazing people we employ. As I continue my journey as a children's mental health therapist, I continue to be thankful for the attention paid to mental health in our district. My hope is that we continue to support our staff, administration, and community in the pursuit of not just the best education in our state, but also the best social, emotional, and behavioral experience we can brought provide to our young ones. Their future health depends on it. Michael Meyer. Board members. The question is what might happen in the event that um we did have a vacancy. So this policy zero one forty-two point five. There's letters A through I. Letter B, the incumbent's resignation would be under consideration. Vacancy shall be filled by the remaining members of the board in accordance with Statute seventeen point twenty-six. Filling a board vacancy, if a majority of the board is still seated, the vacancy shall be filled by the board using the following procedure. The board shall seek qualified and interested candidates from the community throughout through the news media, word of mouth, and contacts with appropriate organizations. All applicants are to submit a notice of their interest in writing to the Board President. The more board may interview candidates to ascertain their qualifications. Appointment by the board to fill a vacancy shall be by a majority vote of the existing board. So that is the procedure that that we will follow. I would like to suggest to the board that in the notification, maybe we'll work on putting something together suggesting that we open the window up and that we close the window up of Canada, see um on May twenty-fourth, which is a Wednesday.
Steve, this is different than, like, I know a city council seat opened and they chose to leave a station for the remainder of the time. Uh, we have to appoint someone at this point or vote someone in?
Have to, but there's a full year left.
Sure.
I mean, generally, if there's a month or two months, three months, you might leave it open till the election, but you're looking at a full year here.
Okay.
Amy, anything to add on that?
Not really. Um, I agree with Len. I think considering that it would be a full year, I think it would be to the to the best interest of our district to look at having some applications and you guys review those.
And Mr. President, I'd like to ask if we could extend the closing of it a little longer so we can meet as a group first? You know, get the get the names in. Or when would we make, you know, the decision? That's where
That'd be just for the applicants.
Just for the applicants.
Okay. And then and I can work with Amy on on how to get a committee, I think, who
I can tell you how it's done. Okay. I've been through this a few times.
Okay.
Um, generally, we get the applicant applicants come back and then the board reviews the applications. We then, as a group, decide which ones to bring forward, whether it's all or some. And then what at that point, say, 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 seven people were to come in, you narrow it down to three or four. And then we have a list of questions. They come in and we interview them. We already have, I'm going to say there's already questions that we have on file that we've used, or we can come up with other questions. But then we interview each one of them individually, and then we vote on which one we would want to have. That's been done in the past.
That fall under an open bidding?
Yes.
So then looking at the calendar, the twenty-fourth, which is a Wednesday, and then we have uh the next committee of the whole is the fifth. And then the regular board meeting would be the twelfth. Would we have until the twelfth to seat them?
Yeah, there's no
No.
There there's no deadline.
No deadline.
Not in July. You just don't want to leave it sitting open.
Right. Okay. So are you okay with the closing it at the twenty-fourth and then then we'll put together, we'll get together as a group and let's see what the next step is.
Wednesday?
It's a Wednesday, so it's
It's two Wednesday.
Be from tomorrow or
Two weeks.
Okay.
Okay. That gives you enough time to get what you need out.
Okay.
Is there a format that they have to follow or do they just submit interest?
They submit or notice of interest in writing.
We'll probably explain that. We'll probably explain that in the posting, how they need to submit it.
Yeah, it would it would behoove anybody that applies to send some sort of a resume. You know, sort of a the why I want to and some background. Yes. Not just say, send in, says, I'm interested.
Tuesday. Before, because we we have some questions that are
Like it one like
Really, yeah.
Easier to weed out.
All right. Uh, my final before we move on Teacher Appreciation Week. Take time to think. Sorry. You know, we we cannot operate without the teachers in in our school district and all the fantastic work that they do with our children.
Those retirements, Terry.
That's just seventeen. That's the seventeen.
No, yeah. Be on the lookout for some special teacher appreciation videos.
Oh, Chloe. Amy, do you have any other district or program highlights?
Um, nope, just another shout out for Teacher Appreciation Week, and I'll be back uh in the office on Wednesday.
For doctor?
Yes.
Do you have a sign? Do you have a sign?
Side release.
I got my assignment done by Molly. I I gave her the doctor's note.
Okay. All right. Any other district or program highlights by any board members? Consideration of bills and pre-approved bills?
Don't move.
Second.
Motion in a second to pay the bills.
Pay the bills.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. And any comments by members of the public? With that, this closes our meeting for this evening. Officially adjourned. Thank you very much for being here.